Okay, we're gonna get started. This is the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission. I'm joined to my left by Councilman Leon Pinkett, to his left Madam Comptroller Joan Pratt, to her left Steve Kraus, who is the Deputy Director of Finance and will be, per charter, sitting in for the Director of Finance, Henry Raymond, to his left Councilman Bill Henry, far left, sorry, to my right Stephen Lisnewski, who is the Acting Inspector General, and to his right Michael Huber, who is the Director of Economic Development for Council President Jack Young. Mr. Huber, if we are taking votes, will not be voting today because there's not a provision in the Charter to vote for the Council President, and staff to the committee Marguerite Curran, and then from the Council President's office, Legal Counsel to the Council Rebecca Tab, that was a lot of councils, I apologize, and Karan Banks from the Mayor's Office. We have a pretty brief agenda today. I don't think that an introduction is necessary unless anyone who's attending, and I only see, I think, one member of the public, Mr. Troy here, unless anyone needs an explanation of what the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission is intended to do, we're gonna skip over the introduction. There were meeting minutes that were disseminated in the spring or over the summer. You all have received a copy of those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes from the February 15, 2017 meeting?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Pinkett, second by Pratt. All those in favor of approving those minutes say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Or, we can do roll call. Costello, yes. Kraus for Raymond?
Yes.
Lisnewski?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Young is absent. Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
And Costello, yes. Okay. We are going to do a brief update from Bob McCarty, who's the City Auditor on the Group A audits. Mr. McCarty, if you could briefly go through timeframes for both performance and financial. Real quickly before you begin, let me just run through the rest of the agenda. The meet of today's meeting is gonna be a discussion of the performance scope for Group B audits. After this meeting, we will capture on paper all of the discussion, and Mr. McCarty and I will meet in early January to kind of flesh out what we discussed today and what will be possible for the Group B audits in 2018. And lastly, we will hopefully schedule our next meeting, although that's not absolutely critical at this point. There is detail on each of the eight agencies that were in Group A for the Commission members. We did not plan on going through that level of detail today. If there are specific things that you want to ask about, keeping in mind that these audits are gonna be delivered in the next one to one and a half months, it would probably be more appropriate to wait until Mr. McCarty comes back for a more in-depth briefing in early spring, but if there's anything burning, please feel free to ask Mr. McCarty. And with that, Bob, please take it away.
Okay, thank you. Is this okay? Okay. Bob McCarty, City Auditor. I'm with Audrey Askew, Deputy City Auditor. The handout basically shows the Group A Biennial Audit. The first page is Financial, and as Councilman Costello said, we hope that by the end of February. Does anybody need a handout? Is that what's... Okay, okay. And the second page is basically all the performance audits, Group A. The only thing difference in, different in Group A is that one of these agencies was never done before, the Mayor's Office of Human Services. We have kind of, we didn't start all these at the same time, but as you started them and gone through other audits, we found some issues that resonate throughout all the agencies, so we're trying to make sure we have those all resolved before we issue them. And that's all I have is a general overview. Councilman, um, is that... And then, as you requested, I included all the performance criteria that in Group A. It's very detailed, but it's all here if you'd like to go over it.
If you could briefly walk through the BDC situation, just so that everyone's...
Oh, the BDC, okay, sure. The Baltimore Development Corporation has its own annual financial audit. They've completed 15 and 16, and they hope to be done 17 in the next few weeks. At the first meeting of the Commission, the Commission has power to waive not doing an audit, and that was done, that was very long last time, if you recall. And we do do the performance audit there, we do cover that.
Got it. Colleagues, any questions? We've been joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey, who's not on the Commission, just for clarity, no offense.
And then the other is the detail of what we're doing on the performance audits for each of the Group A.
So, everything that's scheduled for Board of Estimates for January 10th for all intensive purposes is completed at this juncture?
You're talking about the financial audits?
Financially and performance, yeah. There's...
Financial and performance, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Some little cleanup to do, but yes.
Okay. Well, this is, in my humble opinion, pretty impressive considering where we were with audits a year and a half ago. So, is everyone on the Commission good with the approach to have Mr. McCarty come back to us, let's say sometime in, I think, mid to late February, and talk through what the findings are for each of these agencies? We can have agency officials come in at that time as well? Councilman?
Mr. Chair, I think that makes a lot of sense. What I would ask is, will we get copies of all of these when they come through the Board of Estimates so that we have them to review before the meeting where we do that?
Yes, that's the plan to do.
Okay.
Yes.
Right now, I know that I'm receiving hard copies of the audits. Madam Comptroller, Bob, would it be possible to get electronic copies as well?
Yes, it would.
And just have those distributed?
You want both?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And just have those electronic copies distributed to the entire...
Okay, how many copies? Is it one for each Committee Member, or...
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay, okay.
Not to, not to be nitpicky, but I have, I've reached a point where I need to ask these details about electronic copies of long documents. If they could be actual, either docs or PDFs, as opposed to taking a written document and scanning it in and just having the image, because then it's sometimes difficult to load up to the point where it can be easily read.
Okay, we usually do PDFs, but whatever you prefer, we'll provide.
Yeah.
Yeah, PDF would be fantastic.
Okay.
Okay, so the plan will be, before we move to the next agenda item, plan's gonna be to have Bob come back in in mid to late February, obviously have a much more substantive discussion about these. Everyone's on board with that? Any concerns before we move on to the next item? Okay. Next up is a discussion of Group B performance scope. So we have eight audits that are up this year.
Turn the page over. It's on this one.
The very last page, page 14 has the eight.
Oh, you already wrote them down.
Easy for you.
I have to pull out my Charter, and we've been joined by Councilman John Bullock from the Ninth District, who also is not on the Commission. So we've got Department of Law, DHR, Transportation, Police, Wreck and Parks, Planning, Health, and the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. So I was hoping the bulk of the conversation today could be around our prospective performance measures for each of those eight agencies, and then we can get all that buttoned up immediately after the New Year.
Okay.
So let's start with...
Just to point out, the last two, Health and MLD, have not been done before.
Correct, those are two of the three new ones, and the other was...
Yes.
Mayor's Office of Human Services.
Yes.
So if we want to start with Department of Law, and Commission members, please feel free to point anything out that you think is an issue.
The past meeting, Councilman, we took notes and sent you our, what's your, a summary what you provided us. Is that what you'd like to do this time? We'll...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I'd be interested to see if there's any way to measure the number of lawsuits, the number of suits that the city is engaged in, what percentage of those the city is winning versus losing, as well as what the cost of those are to the city, something in that.
And which ones are just settled?
And which ones are settled? Something tracking that, because I don't know that Law Department, unless I'm mistaken, currently tracks that and provides that to the City Council, obviously separate from this.
And also, excuse me, this background, we're doing fiscal years 15, I'm sorry, 16 and 17 this year.
For Group B, Group A was fiscal 15 and 16.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And that'll be the, that'll be the plan moving forward.
Yes, yes.
We'll be doing the two previous years as...
Just wanted to point it out, that's...
Yep. And just to point a clarification for the Commission, what we did last time, while we had suggestions, Bob's office also put together recommendations for the performance scope for us as well. So per Bob and my discussion, his team will be putting together some recommendations for what the scope will be for each of the Group B agencies. Anyone on Law Department before we move on? Department of Human Services, or Human Resources, pardon me?
Mr. Chair? I don't have one for the Law Department. Is, are there, are there two different handouts?
The last page addresses the Group Bs, just a...
Oh, Justin.
That's all it is.
Oh.
The other one, yes, that's just for the talking points for you.
Yeah, I was, okay, so I was looking for this for the Department of Law.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I got you, okay. Well, actually, what were we, I did have a question about the DPW performance audit, specifically the bullet point. DPW did not meet its targets for the number of rat burrows baited during fiscal years 2014, 2015.
What page do you want?
I'm sorry, I'm on page seven.
Seven, thank you.
However, because of missing data and discrepancies in data to support the actual reported amounts, we could not determine whether the reported performance measure amounts, I'm sorry, whether the reported performance measure amount were accurate and reliable. So if I could take a swing at translating that sentence...
Okay.
We don't know how many rat burrows they actually baited.
It was, yes, there was not, was not documentation for that.
So, on the one hand, they reported that they didn't meet their target, but on the other hand, we couldn't confirm that they even did as many as they said they did.
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right. I'm just, I'm, I need to, I need to occasionally check my translating skills when I'm, when I'm going through stuff.
And we're following up on that in this, this cycle.
The reason I, my eye was drawn to that is because I'm in an ongoing conversation with the Department of Public Works over how much they try proactively to bait rat burrows, in terms of, we have this, we have this operational mindset of, if somebody reports a rat burrow, we go out, we inspect, and if we see a rat burrow, we go, yep, that's a rat burrow, and then we give them a form and tell them, if they fill out the form to give us permission, we will come back and go onto their property and bait the rat burrow. And unsurprisingly, a large percentage of people who have allowed rat burrows to occur on their property do not bother to proactively fill out that form and send it back to the city, giving us permission to come onto their property to bait. Other subdivisions leave a note saying, if you don't send us back something saying why we can't or shouldn't, we're coming back in five days to bait that rat burrow. And I strongly believe that if we would take that operational approach, it would be easier for them to hit their targets in numbers of rat burrows baited. How do we make sure, Mr. Chair, that somebody in a position to make that change at DPW is part of this conversation at or after the meeting where we review this performance audit?
Well, the legislative intent is, as this was drafted, was that the audits would speak for themselves, and there would be an assumption that there would be political pressure on the executive, the mayor, directing her department heads to implement the recommendations that come in the, in the audit. So for example, the rat rubout issue, presumably in the, in the report, that was one of the performance measures, then Mr. McCarty's team would review that issue and would make some type of recommendation to improve the performance, and it would then be on the mayor to direct her director, in this case Director Chow, to implement those recommendations. So the idea was that the political pressure would motivate the executive to make those changes, if that makes sense.
So...
There's no way that we could...
No, I get, yeah.
The only way we could force it is through legislation, and even then, there's some certain limitations. Does that make sense?
I get that. No, I was looking more for the, I guess this is more of a logistical thing for how that pressure gets applied. Will it be, will we, as this Commission, be doing follow-up hearings?
Great, great question.
Or would they be, like, subcontracted out to the individual council committees that are more closely connected to individual departments?
Two, two-part answer to that. One, as part of the Charter Amendment, and I think this is the most important thing that's in that Charter Amendment, Mr. McCarty's required to conduct follow-up two years from the date of the audit as part of the next round. So for example, DPW was Group A, it was completed in 2017 for fiscal years 15 and, or for years 15 and 16.
16, yes.
When Bob's team does an audit of Group A again, which will be in calendar year 2019, as part of his DPW audit, the first thing that he will be doing is recommendation follow-up.
Sure.
And I think that's where the rubber meets the road in terms of keeping the executive branch agencies accountable, as to your, the second part of the question, with respect to each of the City Council Committees that have purview over the agencies, and keeping in mind, there's certainly not a one-to-one relationship.
Right.
The Council reserves the right at any time to conduct oversight through the normal City Council resolution process.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
For Human Resources, can we think through a performance objective that addresses the number of potential city employees who were denied employment with the city, and specifically looking at city residents? So folks who applied for jobs, who were city residents, and the reasons that they were denied employment, if there was follow-up after, I still need to think through that, but I know that's something that the Council President is laser-focused on, is how is city government employing more city residents?
Okay.
Whether it's background checks, or criminal history, or didn't meet educational requirements, or other criteria as, as required of the position, something in that neighborhood. Does that make sense? I mean, we can flesh it out, but...
Yes, yes. Yeah, we, yes.
And also, and I'm not certain if it's already a measure that we're using, but can we look at something that looks at the timeframe of, from application to hire, and, and the efficiencies or lack thereof in, in getting someone through the hiring process?
Yeah, and we had a similar finding in our, in our last audit of, of DHR.
Okay.
And they have, they reported the board, I guess it was a month and a half ago, of the progress they made, but they have a way to go.
Okay.
I got your copy of the last audit, if you'd like.
If you can, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
And would, would that also include the timeframe for background checks?
Uh, no. Background check?
Well...
It's all in the whole process.
Okay, because I think that we, we've heard numerous times that a significant part of the delay is the length of time it takes to do background checks. And so while I'm interested in the entire process, I'm also interested specifically in the background check portion of it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on D...
Can I ask a question about Law that I'm, because would Law also cover MBO, Minority Women Business?
It's part, it's part of Law, yes.
Is there, are we currently using a measure that looks at the number of waivers that we give on city, I guess, funded projects, and our efforts to identify minority and women business that can be contracted for that work so that we're not continuing to waive those projects, or that aspect of the contract over and over?
We can do something like that, yes. I might need to talk to you to work at, what you'd like, but...
I, I think that there's certain contracts...
They should be tracking their waivers, I would hope.
Yeah, and, and not only contracting the waivers, you know, our efforts so that it's, so that it doesn't continue year after year, and that we, we become comfortable with the fact that we don't have a minority business to satisfy that part of the contract.
Okay.
We should, we should be increasing our efforts to, to identify those contractors or develop them.
I'm sorry, I'm taking notes at the same time, so I'm giving you eye contact, wait. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have a question about, you know, looking at the notes from the findings of the Mayor's Office of Information Technologies Biennial Performance Audit. I realize I have a very basic question, and I'm honestly not sure whether this is more accurately a question for Mr. McCarty as an audit question, or whether it's a question for the Mayor's Office as to a goal, whether what I'm thinking of is actually a goal of the Mayor's Office of Information Technology. I have always assumed that one of the goals slash responsibilities of Moet is for eventually all the city agencies to be able to talk to each other, like for all of our different computer systems in different agencies to mesh. I recognize that may be aspirational, but I always assumed that that was at least a goal that we were working towards. And so I'm realizing now, looking at these actual observations, is that actually an official goal of Moet, such that we should be tracking their performance towards it? Or, because if so, I would like to make certain that when the performance audit is done, and I recognize it's one of the last ones in this group that will be completed, I would like to ask that it definitely did, I would hope that it looked at performance towards that goal.
Okay, unfortunately, we've already, already done the fifth, well, pretty much completed the 15, 16 audit for Moet performance. We won't do it again until...
Oh, but I was, I was going off of the fact that it's not going to the Board of Estimates until February 14th, so I thought that meant that there was still work to be done on it.
There is still work, but, you want us to add another...
Just, like, if, and, and it's conditional, I'm, I'm assuming, if it's not, if that is not a goal of Moet, then we should have that conversation first.
Okay.
But assuming...
I know they have a new director in place now.
Yeah, assuming that is a goal of Moet, I just wanted to make sure that it should be in there, how are we tracking progress towards that?
Okay. Would it be okay if I get the information first and get back to you and the Commission to see if we can work that in? Is that, are you okay, Councilman?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We okay to move on to the next agency?
Yeah, thank you.
Department of Transportation. Number one, the extent to which circulator buses, that the fleet is running at full capacity. Specifically, there are a certain number of buses that should be running at all times during hours of operations. They are currently not. So I'd like to get an idea of how efficient the current fleet is toward meeting the, essentially the stated goals of the system, i.e. the number of buses that are supposed to be running. The second item has to do with the extent to which we are effectively managing the, the potential for revenue generation through the dock master responsibilities that should exist if they do not. I do believe that some of them do, but I'm uncertain that, that position is structured the way it should be. Anyone else, feel free to jump in, I have like six more for DOT.
Go get them.
A number...
I'm not the quickest note-taker, I mean, I'm trying to take notes, so I'm doing my best, but I'm gonna get with you after this, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
So first has to do with, and we can circle up after this, but first has to do with the extent to which the existing circulator fleet is effective. The second has to do with the extent to which we are maximizing revenue, generating opportunities through the function of the dock master, or the harbor master, whatever we, we want to call it. Either way, there is great opportunity to capture revenue that we are missing out on significantly. The third item has to do with street lighting, and we can work through the specific wording of the measure, but I think something in the neighborhood of the extent to which street lights are on, what the, what the percentage of on time is, because we know that we have, while the mayor has made great progress in improving the street lighting situation in the city, we are still not where we need to be, especially when we have, whether it's a cable fault, or a bulb that's out, or it's a pole that's been vandalized, i.e. the wires have been cut, we know that we're not where we need to be, and that obviously is a contributor to the public safety situation. I didn't have six more, but...
[laughing]
Anyone? DOT?
Yeah, also on the street lighting, we might want to take a look at, once a complaint is entered, how long it takes for the streetlights to be, the lights to be lit.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if it would be possible to look at, one of the, one of the complaints that I know my colleagues get probably as much as I do, is when we have a street that is unzipped for utility work, and then resurfaced, and then two weeks later, it is unzipped again, and then resurfaced, and we have, we seem to have a significant utility coordination issue, which is resulting in wasted taxpayer dollars, whether it's on the city agency side or the BGE side, which would be good to know as well, because despite what you may hear, those, those rates get passed on to BGE customers, which we call in Baltimore City, citizens and taxpayers. So I don't know, the extent to which we're efficiently coordinating right-of-way utility work? Anyone want to chime in? Is that, I mean, I know that sounds very broad in general.
I feel like that, that, this conversation came up during budget hearings this year, and I'm, I'm trying to remember the answer, the DOT essentially complains...
citizens and taxpayers. So I don't know, the extent to which we're efficiently coordinating right-of-way utility work. Anyone want to chime in? Is that, I mean, I know that sounds very broad in general.
I feel like that, this conversation came up during budget hearings this year, and I'm trying to remember the answer, the DOT essentially complained that there was, that it was hard to coordinate the right-of-way work because there were so many requests for them to try to accommodate. Admittedly, part of the concern at the time was, we were also discussing, would it be possible to get more notice in advance of having our streets suddenly blocked off either partially or in whole because somebody has decided that they need to unzip the street and work under it. But, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't feel like they had a particularly good answer for why they, why there wasn't better coordination other than that it was hard.
Anyone else on DOT? I'd like to, if there's no objections, skip over please and leave that till the end, because that's obviously going to be the bulk of our conversation. Are there any objections to that? Wreckin' Parks? I realize this has a financial aspect to it, but can we, can we determine the extent to which there are effective internal controls in place for managing cash at pools, and the extent to which those internal controls are followed? Grass cutting, anyone?
I don't feel like digging into that right now.
You good?
That's a priority of the Council President.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Council President, the Council President's office would like you to take a look at the frequency with which Wreckin' Parks is cutting the grass, make sure that it's happening on the desired timeframe, those sorts of questions.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wreckin' Parks, everyone good? Council members, commission members? We're gonna take, we're gonna take public comment right at the end, and if there's anything in there, Bob's gonna stick around, and thank you, Ms. Truart. Department of Planning. Not the most exciting agency. Tough crowd. Do you like planning?
I do, too.
I have lots to say about these, I was just saying, I have lots to say about these agencies, I'm just not sure that they fall into the realm of questions that should be asked during a performance audit. I don't know.
I mean, I think we're looking for, I mean, the idea here is, the end game here is to figure out a way to make these agencies more efficient so that we can save tax dollars. And we can do one of two things with those tax dollars, we can expand the scope and quality of the services we provide, or we can reduce taxes. And ideally, it's some healthy combination of those two things. So I would proffer that if you think there's a way to improve an agency, a certain area or mission, or more specifically, as BBMR calls them, the service areas, that would, that would make sense to delve into.
Well, then, I guess I would ask the commission this question before I send it to Mr. McCarty, which is, in that case, if, if my question was, does it make more sense for each agency to have a handful of community liaisons that they send around to all the different community meetings, such that at any given community meeting, there might be people there from multiple agencies only to deal with their agency's issues? Does it make more sense to do that, or does it make more sense to have a larger pool of community planners so that each community planner, who is supposedly, you know, has a broad perspective of what all city agencies are capable of, there could be more community planners to be the liaisons for smaller groups of neighborhoods, and then they could simply liaise with the individual agencies? Like, is that a question to ask in a performance audit about planning? Right, yeah, that's why, that look on your face, that was what was going on in my head.
So we'll leave it to the city auditor to come up with some-
Can we talk about that again?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, I'm not sure at this point.
And keep in mind, for each of these, you know, Bob's team's gonna put forth some recommendations.
I'm happy to discuss it further.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question about Wreckin' Parks? And this might not be a measure, but maybe you can help me through. I know that Wreckin' Parks, I believe, was charged to implement a program or software called Rec Pro, where they would be able to measure attendance at various rec centers. And I'm not certain how effective they've been in enrolling that out, and then even in the places where it's been installed, if they're actually using. And so it was designed so that we would have a better understanding of how many people are using the rec centers, and at what frequency, and doing what times of the day. And so, if possible, I'd like to have a measure that looks at, one, the rollout of Rec Pro, and then measuring the usage of it.
Okay, do you know what year it started?
I think two years ago, three years ago.
Because the last audit covered through 14, so it's, it'd be brand new for this time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I got one more to add on transportation.
Okay.
Which is somewhat related to Wreckin' Parks, but can we take a look at the special events application process?
Maybe not, now, special, special events?
I think that horrifying chuckle was an endorsement.
I know it was. So just in general, or you want to think about?
I mean, we're-
I'm happy to be more specific.
Please.
So that, the process for closing streets for special events has been altered over the years to the point where there is now pretty much no public community or council manic notice that streets are going to be closed for events until 72 to 48 hours beforehand. And when I drilled down into why it had been changed, it was, I was told that when they used to provide community notice, then what would happen is, community associations either directly or using the council people would put political pressure on the police department or transportation to deny certain permits. And so the process was changed, quote, and I'm quoting here, "to take politics out of it." I always find it entertaining to hear that from the administration, because what takes polit, take politics out of it usually means takes the city council out of it, because the mayor is still in a position to exercise, you know, influence one way or the other through the administrative process. So I would be happy to know more about how that process is working now.
Okay.
And whether they track complaints about blocks that have been closed with little to no notice to the community in advance.
Sounds like we're good on planning. Department of Health, can we look at something related to the, am I pronouncing it the right way, naloxone? Can we, can we look at the extent to which the naloxone distribution program has been successful? I don't know, I think I need to flush that out a little bit more, but just something around that.
Okay.
Health?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question actually about health, parks and recs, and transportation. Now, I know we did not do this in the past year with the previous audits for Department of Public Works, General Services, and basically those two. But in the past year, the OIG has been notified of a lot of lax policy in the distribution in the storeroom policies of equipment and mostly equipment with these agencies. And there's a large number of thefts that have occurred, which have been some high sustainable losses to these agencies that the OIG has not been notified of. Now, Department of Public Works has just recently brought on a person who is actually redoing the storeroom policy and procedures on the dissemination and oversight of all equipment that gets dispersed on a daily basis. I was concerned, and I don't know, again, if this is a performance issue that can be audited for Department of Transportation, Department of Parks and Recs, and also Department of Health. So I guess my question is, would this come under a performance?
Do you determine the extent to which there are appropriate inventory controls in place?
More so performance, yes.
Can we, if there's no objections, I think we, I would like to recommend that we ask Bob to prioritize the IG's request above all the other performance scope items for each of those three agencies. That was DOT, Wreckin' Parks, and Health?
Correct.
Yep.
And you have information on these?
I can get together with you at a later date and talk to you about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Health? Mayor's Office of Employment Development? Do we, do we have, I'm not seeing it, but do we have a performance measure in the budget book that just says how many people, or determines how many people obtain employment through Moed?
And to add to that, how many are Baltimore City residents?
Yeah, we do, we do have one for, not for what the comm. control has stated, but for the first half of that, but maybe if there's a way to expand on that. I know in fiscal 16, the actual 79 percent, our targets for 17 and 18 were 55 percent. And that's a percentage of job seekers who commence service delivery from the one-stop centers and are also employed one year later. We also have that measure for 120, for at least 120 days. Yeah, if we can tinker around with that to figure out the extent to which Moed as an agency is successful in securing employment for individuals with a focus on city residents, does that sound right? Councilman?
I was, I've been sitting here trying to figure out how to craft this, because what I really wanted was to get a sense of whether Moed had already identified a reasonable goal in terms of what percentage of youth works eligible youth actually apply for youth works. And what I'm thinking is, my first thought was, maybe, because I don't know if we even have a really accurate census of how many 14 to 24-year-olds there are in the city, to know that there are X thousand of them, what percentage should we be thinking should be looking to youth works as the employer of last resort during the summer or after school for the ones that are still in secondary education? And so I'm still kind of playing around with how to frame this, but I guess the first question is, do they even have a goal of how many people apply, or how many people they want to apply to then be working towards a goal of youth works on demand, where we can actually provide a slot for every young person who applies and goes through the application process and qualifies?
Okay, maybe we can get together and-
Sure.
When people apply, then we have slots.
Oh, right, I know, I know, I know, I know we have that situation right now. I want to say last year that something like 15,000 applied for eight or nine thousand slots. So what I'm looking at is two, two things. One is, and one of it is not really Moed's problem in terms of how much we're able to allocate to them in the budget so that they have enough slots. But is 15, is the 15,000 who are, who applied last year, was that a good goal, you know, or were, are there another 10,000 young people who were eligible for youth works but didn't even bother to apply because, you know, either they didn't hear of it, or they didn't have anybody in their life who could help them do the application? Because that I see as being something that Moed should be trying to make sure that everyone who could apply does. And then I look at it as the mayor and city council's job to make sure that there's money for Moed to actually find slots, to serve as many of them as possible. That's a different, that's a different problem. You, I see, so what am I, what am I missing?
You said you want, you want the, you said you want the performance measure to be the youth workers who qualify, the ones that didn't apply, you want?
What I'm trying to get, what I'm trying to find out is, is there a metric? Is there a metric of, we want to get 90 percent of all the eligible 14 to 24-year-olds to apply? We want to get 80 percent, because some percentage of these people have access to jobs on their own without having to go through youth works. And some, you know, and some chunk of these kids are doing other things during the summer and don't need to have a job. But there must be a number of, these are the, this percentage of the kids need to have a job in the summer and need help getting it. And have we tried to identify that number? That's, I guess that's the best way I can think of to frame the question. Have we tried to identify- Have we tried to identify that as a performance metric? Thank you for helping me talk it out.
Are we good on MoED? Uh, Michael?
Thank you. So, in addition to the amount, um, and percentage of those hire, of the folks that MoED helps find a job, if we could take a look at how many they send through their training programs? Whether it's programs that they administer themselves or contract with? And then, of those trainees, what percentage have a job, whether at the end or after some defined amount of time? And then, and I don't know what, what the precise, I don't know what the most, um, hope beneficial metric on this would be, but if we could take a look at how many X-offenders MoED is serving?
How many?
X-offenders, um, through their various programs?
And if I could add one thing to that, just, uh, the extent, on the X-offender piece, the determining, you know, the extent to which MoED is prioritizing, um, col- um, collaboration with, um, expungement services? Something along those lines. I'd have to think a little bit more about it, but trying to figure out, like, um, trying to figure out the numbers, and I know that's of big interest to Council President Young, but also diving a little bit deeper into, is it a priority? And really just that, that X-offender piece, if that makes sense?
Yes.
We can talk through it, but... Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna confirm, um, that it's already gonna be in the performance audit to track the progress and success of the existing local hire law that we passed a couple of years ago? Where, um, MoED is supposed to be, um, working with large employers who have contracts with city work over a certain level? And there, there was a very complicated process set up in which MoED helps the employers try to identify Baltimoreans, preferably from the immediate community around wherever the work is happening, but at the very least, from Baltimore City. Um, there, there, it, I, I'm having trouble synopsizing it because it was extremely carefully crafted to avoid constitutional concerns. Michael, do you wanna go into detail, more detail?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Please, please.
Um, so, some of the things to look at there might be the amount, um, frequency and amount of waivers that are granted, um, to contractors who are eligible to the law. Um, and then on, and I know MoED tracks all of the contracts that are subject to the law. Um, so I'm sure you could work with them to develop the best metrics, but some of them would be, you know, an up or down question, how many contracts? Of, of the contracts, are, is the contractor in compliance or not?
I, I'd, I'd also like to see a, a total number. So, it, not, not just number of contracts, but, you know, of the total number of employees hired on a temporary or permanent basis through these, like, the contracts would just be the temporary ones. For the total number of employees hired, how many of them were from the immediate neighborhoods for, especially for the construction jobs, and how many of them are from Baltimore City, period?
Can I, can I summarize what you two just said? I think what we wanna do is determine the extent to which the local hiring law has been effective and understand, um, instances in which it has not been, but has been justified, i.e. use of waivers, et cetera.
Right, as, I, I, I would agree with that in, in as much as I would like to see it have as much data as possible. Okay?
Got it. Um, anyone else on MoED before we jump back to Health for a second? Councilman Pinkett?
Um, yeah, and I just wanna, I'm, I'm not certain if we already measured this, but, um, when I was looking at the budget book, they, they have something that says percentage of mandated food service facility inspections completed. I, I wasn't clear about what the mandated food service inspection.
They get the licenses that the...
So, 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 we're required to inspect every food facility at least once a year?
I, I don't know the specifics, and it varies based on the type of food facility. So, for example, a tavern that doesn't have food versus a restaurant versus banquet hall, but there's, I believe, requirements in COMAR and the state code, um, which require a certain interval for each category of how often those should be inspected.
Okay.
So, I think it's written in state law what the number is. I, I think what you're asking is, are we meeting that, right?
Right, and then, I guess, to get to it, that, um, in many communities, um, the, the food establishments end up becoming the nuisance properties. And we can, we could be, we could better address some of that behavior if there was consistent inspections. And so, um, and those inspections are only happening as a result of being complaint-driven when they really should be on a consistent basis annually. Um, and so, I don't know how to...
Can I try and summarize it?
Yeah, please do.
Um, determine the extent, uh, to which the Health Department is consistently inspecting of food establishments in accordance with state law?
That, that'll work.
Okay.
All right, uh, one last call for these seven agencies, Law, DHR, Transportation, Rec and Parks, Planning, Health, or MoED, before we jump into BPD?
Um, just, just one, one other thing, just to drill down in Rec and Parks. Um, I, I, oh, wait. Um, in reference to Rec and Parks, if we're, if we're not already doing it, um, I, I'd like to see a, a specific measurement that looks at the, uh, our efforts to, um, engage seniors in our rec centers.
Okay.
All right, last call on those seven. Baltimore Police Department? Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Huber?
Um, so, if we could take a look at, um, the percentage of new hires, new recruits, whatever the proper terminology is for the Police Department, that are Baltimore City residents? And then, looking at the same issue from sort of another angle, the percentage of Baltimore City residents who apply to the Police Department, who are rejected, and try to get a sense of, of why the, why they're being rejected? What some of the trends are?
Madam Comptroller?
Yeah, on the Recs and Parks in, engaging seniors in rec centers, if we could determine, um, the type of training that they have on computer and how many classes they have on computer training?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, is this an okay time to raise additional questions on police?
Yeah.
Okay, right, um...
Well, do you have anything on performance scope specifically?
I think that's, I think this would count as a performance issue. What I'm curious about in terms of what we're spending on overtime, I'm curious how much of overtime is being spent on additional or, or, you know, sudden priorities, like when a commander has a spike of crime in a certain part of their district, so they deploy extra officers to that location? And they have to use overtime to do that. How much of overtime is being spent on those types of deployments? Versus how much overtime is being spent on just filling ordinary posts? Because the officer who should be in that post either hasn't been hired or is not available for some other reason. And that some other reason would be, um, a, I guess technically, a separate question? Um, because I, I have had difficulty, um, it was, it was an exhaustive process getting from the Police Department the straight answer of how many actual patrol officers are there right now? Um, and in terms of, well, there are some patrol officers who are out on medical leave. And there are some who are out on administrative leave. Uh, there are even one or two who are currently on active duty in the military. Um, when, when you add all of those up, it's a pretty extensive chunk of officers who are in the budget, but not actually showing up for work on any given shift. So, that, so, that would be a, light duty. I, I, in my head, the light duty and the medical are kinda, are, are, um... So, that's a second question. And then, the third one, and again, I think that this falls more into the performance audit question, is would a performance audit look at other cities? And in, in terms of, when looking at how our patrol division is organized? My understanding is that the national average of total percentage of your uniformed officers who are assigned to patrol, that nationally, that number is at or above sixty percent? And to the best of my knowledge, that number has not been above fifty percent in Baltimore City in the last ten years.
If, if I can, I, I think the reason the answer is no is because there, it's arbitrary and there's no set national cri- we would need criteria. So, like, one of the things that, and Bob, feel free to jump in if I mischaracterize this. I haven't been an auditor in three years, but one of, um, one of the things that you need at the beginning is some type of criteria. That can be a law, that can be, uh, a...
A professional standard.
A policy, um, or a procedure within an agency. It can be, it can even be something political. For example, a, a great political arbitrary performance measure could be when the mayor stated that she was going to, uh, install six thousand streetlights. She could've said eight thousand, she could've said four thousand. We could measure the extent to which she had done the, the six thousand, but there's no, there's no national criteria for what percentage of the officers should be in your patrol versus in your special units.
Let me, let me do this then. Let me, let me, let me offer a reframe. I think it is reasonable to ask that the flat percentage number of what percentage of our uniformed officers are actually assigned to patrol, just as a metric, not making a judgment on it.
But that's just a, I mean, we could just ask the Police Department that. I mean, we know, we know what those numbers are.
Well, isn't the point of an audit to sort of have an independent, uh, confirming of those numbers?
I, I mean, so it's, first off, it's a dynamic number, it's not static, right? So, the Commissioner could tomorrow decide that he's gonna make a new...
Yeah, okay.
You know, outer space unit, or a, you know...
Don't give him any ideas.
Reservoir unit. I, I mean, so it, it's kinda difficult to... I, I mean, I'll defer to Bob.
I got you, I got you.
He's the auditor, but I...
Um, the way it stands now would be difficult, but we could, again, we could, our next meeting, we could talk about it.
I, I'll can, I'll, I'll, I'll continue to think about how to better frame it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we, building off of, of what Councilman Henry just said, is there, there a way to... Let me frame the problem, and maybe you can frame what the objective question is. So, the problem is that we have a shortage of patrol officers, we know that. Um, we have a relatively good idea of what that shortage is. And then, on the other hand, we have, um, skyrocketing overtime costs. And we recognize that there's a need for overtime because we budget it every year. So, there, there are reasonable justifications to have overtime. Um, for example, there might be a, a crime spree in a certain neighborhood and we need to flood a neighborhood with, with additional police resources. Or, um, we know that on opening day, or let's say the Ravens make the playoffs and they're in the Super Bowl, we know we're gonna need more police officers that night. Those things are kind of outside of our control, and that's why we budget for overtime. So, in fiscal seventeen, we budgeted for like seventeen or eighteen million, and I think we had forty-four and a half million in overtime. So, marrying those two things together, is there a way to frame an objective that deals with, if we, if we accelerated getting patrol filled, to what extent does that reduce our reliance upon overtime? Recognizing that we're always gonna have some reliance on, on overtime. There's, there's always gonna be instances, um, in which we need those extra resources. Does that make sense?
So, you're saying, um, X number of patrol positions filled equals how much overtime, or...
I think so. I, I guess, I don't even know that this is an audit question. This, this, maybe this is just sitting down and doing the math on a piece of paper. And I don't even know if it's performance or financial, but let me just run through it again at a high level. The problem is, we don't have enough patrol officers. So, we know people get drafted for, to fill those slots, even though not all the slots are filled. And we gotta pay them overtime. And we know overtime's important, and there are instances when overtime is just, justified. There are instances when it's not. If we were able to fill those patrol positions, what impact does that have on our reliance upon overtime? I don't know that that's an appropriate question for a performance audit, but...
I think so.
Probably not.
We could talk, we could talk about some more, but...
Yeah. BPD?
Um, I, I have, I have, well, I'll try to see if, if this is an appropriate question for audit. Is it possible for us to look at the, uh, percentage of officers who leave the force but remain in law enforcement?
In other jurisdictions?
In other jurisdictions.
Does that include retirements? I mean, people that...
Yeah, people that come back on, retired.
Yeah, okay. And also, people come back, I don't know, they come back maybe in ministry positions? Do, I see a lot of, uh, police come back at the board, um, filling different positions.
But it's BPD, what are they doing?
Right, right, right. Some have retired, some are moving on. Um, and so, it's important to know...
But this is working other jurisdictions?
Yeah, I, I think the, and especially the other jurisdiction question is critical because if people, if officers are leaving, and we, we know they are, they're leaving the force and then going somewhere else and still, you know, as in a position of police officer, it means that they still wanna stay in the profession, they just don't wanna do it in Baltimore.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they get their twenty, well, it used to be twenty years, I don't know what it is now, I think it's twenty-five, but...
I think it's in litigation limbo.
Okay.
Hopefully, it gets resolved. Anyone else on BPD? Last call on any of the eight agencies before we take public comment? Okay, um, Bob, if we can meet sometime, you know, early to mid-January after the holiday and flush through this, me, you, and Marguerite, and we can go through our notes. Um, now, we're going to take public comment, and we did not have people sign in, although I don't think we need to. Now we're going to take public comment and we did not have people sign in, although I don't think we need to. Ms. Trueheart? And Bob, if you could please stick around.
You should be safe there. She generally aims forward.
Troy. You, you wanna testify too? You wanna testify?
I won't hurt you. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Ms. Trueheart, keep hold the thing, it's recorded on TV. Thank you.
Please speak clearly into the microphone. Thank you, okay. I'm reading the note here for me. This is a new edition. Okay, um, audits are important and I thank the commission for what you're starting to do. The chairman said something about the objective of the commission and audits is to ensure that tax dollars are being spent wisely and, um, and, and to save dollars. I think a little bit differently. I'd like to think that these audits are to ensure that our tax dollars are being spent the way we want them spent. And that, yes, ultimately, we want that to be in a, in a extremely economical way.
May I interrupt and just add one thing?
Sure.
I think we're both saying the same thing.
Okay.
I think that we're, we're trying to make sure government is running efficiently. And when we find areas where it's not efficiently, we can fix it. And if there's money left over, we can expand that quality of scope or we can reduce taxes. But I think we're saying the same thing. Thank you, Ms. Trueheart.
And I agree. But I think one point that I wanna add is that we as citizens have felt that money was not being spent to meet our needs. There were needs being met by the expenditures. But, but quite often, not to meet the needs of the neighborhoods and the citizens who reside there. And I'd like to think these audits are gonna help us identify where money isn't really serving those who are residents and pay taxes. As noted in a recent news story, if we can go down to the planning issue, there was a, a study that looked at the disparities and how our capital funds are being spent in the city. And there was a, a significant disparity between neighborhoods where people of color live and neighborhoods of other folks. And I'd like to think that our audits are gonna adjust those disparities or at least attempt to address some of those disparities as well as make recommendations to city agencies on how to avoid those disparate expenditures that occur. To me, that's a role for the Department of Planning. And how these audits identify bad practices in our agencies, I think is critically important, that, that best practices from across the nation be looked at and implemented when they help us meet the taxpayers' objective. Cause we do some really foul funky stuff in this government, right? And it needs to, to stop. And if the audits can help us do that, I'm standing here hopeful. But, you know, I'm still the skeptic that I am. The other thing around planning, if we're gonna ensure that there is equity in these expenditures in this government to serve all the citizens, one thing that is lacking is a comprehensive master plan in this city. And the last comprehensive master plan update was done in 2008 by our previous mayor, Dixon. That plan should be guiding these expenditures that we're talking about. Because if a neighborhood has a plan, whatever you wanna call it, a SNAP, a neighborhood plan, a master plan, I would think that government agencies should be expending their money around the needs identified in those master plans. And having a comprehensive overarching city master plan that these neighborhood plans feed into has not occurred since 2008. And I find that very troubling, cause I'm trying to figure out what planning does if that's not what they're doing, right? And every time I talk to the planning director about it, he says it's not in his, projected work to do an update to the comprehensive master plan. I need that. I don't know why it's not being done. I don't know why we haven't insisted that it be done. Cause for them to keep sucking up money from us to do what they want to do? Cause see, that's not what government's about. Not doing what the planning director wants is what the citizens want. And the fact that he keeps getting away with doing what he wants? And he ain't put no money in my neighborhood, right? There's, there's virtually nothing that he has done to improve my community, right? But he surely has, has done a lot to improve other neighborhoods. I find that offensive, right? I need y'all to do something about it, right? Cause if we're not improving the plight of every life in this city, I got issues with that. The audit plan, and we've had this conversation before about the annual audit plan that the audit office generates. I'd like to see that updated as the year progresses as opposed to waiting till the end of the year. You know, if you finished an audit in March, let's just say it was done in March, right? As opposed to getting to December and then all of a sudden we're surprised that an audit didn't get done. Cause we citizens have fought hard for this thing called audits. And I think it is only fair that we be kept informed periodically of the progress being made. Wreckin' Parks. I had a meeting today with supposedly Mr. Reggie Moore, who didn't show up for the meeting, but he sent Mr. Bob Wall and Darrell Sutton. And the meeting was a follow-on to a meeting I had at the University of Maryland with Dr. Jay Perman two weeks ago. And in that meeting, Dr. Perman looked at me and he said, "You run a wreck center?" And I said, "Mm-hmm." And he said, "Do you have a pool at that wreck center?" And I said, "Yeah, we do, but it doesn't operate until, you know, May to September." And he said, "Have you seen the stats on numbers of black children who drown? Cause they don't know how to swim." And I said, "Yeah, I've seen that. And I don't have a solution, right? Cause I don't have enough money to solve that problem." He says, "But I got swim instructors. I'm gonna give you a swim instructor this summer so that we can teach our little black children how to swim." And I said, "I love it." So every, and, and this was two Thursdays ago that he and I met. Since that, I have been talking this up all over the city, right? I've been telling folks, "We're gonna teach our black children in this city how to swim, okay?" Might not mean a lot to anybody, but, but that's something Wreckin' Parks ought to be doing, right? Now, I'm getting labor free because I asked, right? When, when he asked me, "Do I have a pool?", he wanted to throw in, Dr. Perman, a body that he'd pay for. I'm thrilled, I'm gonna take it. So I met with Wreckin' Parks today to see if they'd take it. "Will, will you allow me to teach our children?", right? So I was getting a little bit of resistance from this conversation. They're telling me they can't hire swim instructors. "I'm coming to you with a gift, right, from the University of Maryland of a swim instructor and you can't put it in your schedule?", right? I don't get that, but I need y'all to-
Can I ask you a question? Which council district is this in?
Am I, the eighth? Yeah, eighth.
Eighth?
Well, no, the wreck center's in the sixth. I'm sorry, I live in the eighth.
Can we get you with, um, yeah, just cause I wanna make sure we stay focused on the, the-
The audit.
The performance stuff. But can we get you with Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, who represents the sixth?
Yes, yes.
This issue, thank you.
But back to the audit. My point is, what are they doing for us in Wreckin' Parks? What are they doing for our children? And we've been talking about swim instruction for our children for a while. And Mr. Burkeen tried it and then he realized he, he would, and see, that's the other thing that ticks me off. We pay 30-some dollars an hour for a skate instructor, skating, ice skating instructor, right? Over on a certain side of town that has a ice rink. We won't pay $30 an hour for a swim instructor in the pools in our black neighborhoods. That pisses me off. They're telling me they can't afford to pay for a swim instructor, but yet they pay for an ice skating instructor. I ain't gonna say no more about that. But this audit had better look at the disparities that are going on in expenditures in Wreckin' Parks. Not that my babies won't ice skate. They probably will, but this ain't right. This ain't even close to being right. Okay, um, the youth fund. Hadn't been any expenditures in that yet. But one of the things that I asked was, we need to know demographics about our children and youth population in this city. And we touched on this conversation a little bit earlier around the number of children eligible for city-funded jobs through Youth Works. I think the, the demographic data that we need goes much deeper than the 14 to 21-year-olds. I think we need to know every child in this city, right? And where they live, whether they have disabilities, whether they're even eligible to get a job, whether they need special help, right? I'd like us to have a, a database of demographics on our children. We are gonna, about, we're about to spend $12 million on them and we don't know nothing about them, right? Now, there should be data in the school system, okay? But not every child goes to a public school, right? But we need a comprehensive data information system on our children that validates spending that $12 million for this category or that category. And we don't have it yet. And, and I think even around spending money for jobs and spending money for recreation programs, how do you substantiate that you're meeting the need? How do you substantiate that, that if there is a target, which there isn't a target for performance, that you're meeting that target or attempting to get to that target? And so until we know those numbers and we set those targets, we just throwing money in the wind. I, I really think there is a demand for this quality data about our children and youth. And I've been asking, um, two questions. One is, we have city bond funds that we award principally to maintain capital improvements in our facilities, right? So, so Department of Planning leads that, I guess, and they generate a list that goes to the Finance Board and then it comes to the Board of Estimates of those capital investments that the city's gonna make. And going back to the study on the disparate expenditures in this city, it was clear from that study that, that institutions that serve the African-American community were not getting any entree to those bond funds. And I've been asking, and I keep asking, right? What is the process to get on the list? Now, there are a lot of white institutions in this city who have figured it out, okay? There are a whole bunch of blacks who have not. So I'm asking somebody, tell me what that process is for capital funding in Baltimore City? Of cultural institutions, what the deadlines for application are, what's the criteria for applying?
So Ms. Trueheart, I just, again, I wanna make sure we stay on track with respect-
This is bond money that y'all need to be looking at.
I, I understand. The, the information that you're asking on the criteria and the timeframes-
He needs to be looking at whether it's disparate or not, cause it is. It is absolutely disparate.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If, if I could offer a compromise? I think I know how to frame Ms. Trueheart's desires in a performance audit context.
Thank you.
I think, I'm gonna take a swing at this. Would it be reasonable to, as part of the Department of Planning's performance audit, add the metric during the capital budgeting process of using an equity lens when determining the allocations to cultural institutions?
You mean?
How much money goes to institutions that serve people run by people who look like me?
Right, but that's, that's not a performance measure. What that is, is analyzing data on whether or not, you, you're talking about $100 is distribu- for the sake of conversation, $100 is distributed through the capital budget. How much of that, you know, what's the equitable breakdown of those funds? That's not a me, necessarily a measure of the performance of the agency. And further, the, I would add that respectfully, that the planning department doesn't determine what the capital budget is. The planning department is just the agency that is essentially tasked with-
Administering.
Putting, yeah, administering.
And I get that.
Putting it in one document.
I have no qualms with that, but I disagree with you about performance metric. Cause we need a performance metric that looks at racial inequities.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, while I'm, while I'm less comfortable with looking at institutions in terms of who they serve. And as an example, I'll say that, you know, the, the Museum of Art, Baltimore Museum of Art or the Walters are both free institutions. Anybody, anybody who lives in the city can go there and walk in and enjoy and learn. So I'm hesitant to call either of those institutions that only serve certain communities. But it is certainly, you know, a matter of public record who leads them. So you could have a metric of what amount of bond funding we provide to minority-led cultural institutions.
But that's, but again, that's not the performance of an agency. Those are, what you're talking about are political decisions and analyzing data that describes political decisions. I'm, I'm not suggesting that your intent, Ms. Trueheart, is, is wrong by any stretch or even that I disagree with you in any capacity. I'm just suggesting that it's not necessarily appropriate in the scope of a performance audit of an agency.
Mr. Klein and Ms. Green of the, well, is, is Andrew still technically working for the Finance Department?
No.
Yes.
I disagree.
Okay. So Mr. Klein formerly of the Finance Department and Ms. Green of the Finance Department just wrote an article about the conscious effort the city is making towards trying to use an equity lens in making more of its budgeting decisions. I would consider that to be a policy effort. And as such- I would consider that to be a policy effort and as such, how the Planning Department is doing on that seems to be a reasonable performance metric to track if this is clearly a policy that we're going to be trying to enact throughout city government.
So is there a specific policy within the Department of Planning or the Mayor's Office that indicates that needs to be done? Because if there's not a specific policy, then it's impossible to measure the performance of it because there's no criteria that mandates that they're required to do that. Again, I don't disagree in any way, shape, or form with the intent of it, I'm merely suggesting, suggesting that it's not appropriate for the scope of a performance audit. Perhaps the issue is addressed more appropriately in a, in a council committee hearing in which we bring in planning to discuss in detail what they are doing to make sure that those decisions are more equitable, but again, it-
Let me just take one last swing and if it doesn't work, I promise I'll shut up, which is, no, really, um, the, which is, given that while it may not have been a decided-upon policy yet, it is clearly a policy that is being considered and being looked at, as such, it seems to be worthwhile to create a baseline number so that depending on what, if we do choose to move forward with this policy, we'll have baseline data as to what the city is already doing without yet having enacted this policy.
So I appreciate what you're saying, but per city charter, uh, the city auditor is required to adhere to the Yellow Book, which is published by the U.S. Government Accountability Office, and the Yellow Book is explicitly clear that for a performance objective, you are required to have four elements: criteria, condition, cause, and effect. You are still lacking criteria in order to turn that into a researchable question or an objective. Again, I, I agree with what you're saying, merely pointing out the technical limitations to including that as a performance objective, respectfully.
I think that our comptroller can direct her auditors to do whatever she wants them to do, with or without-
She can, she, the comptroller is a duly-elected citywide official who can direct her auditors to do anything she so pleases. However, the city charter is explicitly clear that her auditor needs to adhere to the Yellow Book.
Minimum, minimally, that's what it says. Minimally comply and conform, yes. And she can go over those minimums.
Ms. Trueheart, I would like to-
At any point she, at any point she wants.
I would like to try and find a way to address the issue which you have raised-
I'm gonna find a way, okay? Last point that I'd like to make is, um, two years ago, I introduced through my delegate in the Forty-First District, a piece of legislation that requires the Baltimore City Police Department on or before January first every year to produce a report about the demographics of its workforce, as well as, um, some, um, data related to the number of African-American officers it hires, the number of women it has hired, the number of outreach to minority communities it has participated. That report will come to us in a couple of weeks.
Is that, or can you give me some background, just because I'm not familiar? The, that's existing state law?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Two years ago, in the fifteen session, um-
And they have to produce a report with all those-
House Bill seven, 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 seven-one was enacted and signed by the governor. Every January first on or before, the Police Department has produced this report. We have now two reports. In two weeks, we'll have the third report, which tells us, um, it's approximately seventeen different data points that I asked for. It, it is how we found out that only twenty-two percent of the officers resided in the city because that report came out two years ago, the first iteration came out. That's how we know the number of female officers. That's how we know the numbers of officers assigned to patrol, right? So I am gonna introduce through my delegate, again, a modification of that report that gives us even more data about the Police Department. Unfortunately, it's unfortunate that I have to legislate this. This should be part of their new transparent self, but it's not. But that data is important and if you want to take a look at it, like I said, I'm gonna get, um, I, I tried to submit an amendment to that report last session, but with all the mix-up in the Forty-First, it just got, um, put on the side. But I'm doing it this session to get some additional data because we've learned a lot in the two, um, and, and I think I would like to see some, some auditing of some of the data that has been disclosed in this report. If that's something this commission can help with, I think that would be important.
Yeah, we can take a look at that report.
It is on the Police Department's, because that's part of the law. It has to be posted on the Police Department's website and currently it's on their page in the About Us, um, sub-page.
Okay.
Um, and there's two iterations so far.
Thank you, Ms. Trueheart. Mr. Troy?
Yeah, first, I want to thank the Commission and the Chair and Mr. McCarthy for making progress on this front. I know it's been a long time coming and we're all glad to see things moving forward, even if it's taking a little bit longer than we would have initially liked. But, um, I, I just wanted to confirm a couple of points and also just raise a couple of things that I've noticed. The first is, with this Group A of audits, um, these are scheduled to be done, it looks like, uh, next month and then also in February. I wanted to just confirm that those will also be accompanied with financial audits?
Yeah, so the, um-
Front page.
If you go to, yeah, the front page is financial, the second, the back of the front page is, is performance.
I see, now, okay, I had the-
And I would also add one thing, um, and Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but by and large, the audits are usually completed in a, there's about two to three weeks prior to going to the Board, sound correct? Because there's time, so you have to get on the, you have to meet the hopper deadline for the Board of Estimates.
Gotcha.
So for example, the, the first one, Mayor's Office of Human Services, January ten, uh, which is a Wednesday, uh, for the financial, that's probably completed right now or near-
Right, but you've got it into the process for-
Yeah, so there's a little bit of delay, yeah.
That makes sense. And then, so this Group B, is that gonna be, when do we think that that's gonna be released?
So those will start in two thousand eighteen and that's why the bulk of our conversation. So, and to Bob, uh, to Bob's credit, his, his team didn't get started on all of these on January one of, of two thousand seventeen. So, and, and the reason I, I said that I was very pleased with the progress here is because in, in many instances, these audits didn't start till April or May and these were twelve months' audits. So they've worked very, you know, diligently in terms of trying to get, to, to getting everything done by December thirty-first and by, you know, all things being equal, I'm surprised that they're not a little more behind on that. That's why I was so pleased with that progress. But the conversation that we just had about, you know, what to include in the scope, that was the same conversation we had February fifteenth-
Beginning of last year, of this year, yeah.
Yeah, so-
Got it. Okay, cool. That, that helps me understand the process a little bit better. Um, the thing that I wanted to kind of, um, bring up about the performance audits that you guys are gonna be undertaking, um, is really, you know, looking at what other cities are doing. The thing that really disappointed me about some of the stuff that was done and, and released in two thousand sixteen, um, you know, thinking about specifically things like the Baltimore Police Department audit that was done that looked at the years like two thousand ten through two thousand thirteen, um, didn't say a lot, you know? It basically, uh, said, here's the financial statements, here's some things that we've asserted, and it didn't really make any kind of conclusions about, uh, you know, what was really happening inside the Baltimore Police Department. And I think that there's a lot more that we could be doing in terms of comparing things to other cities. So just as a couple of quick examples, um, you know, Boston did a very lengthy and detailed audit, um, of their police department that included a lot of different, um, you know, performance and financial aspects and compared performance to other cities, and that now is a tool that can be used to manage that department a lot more effectively. And I think I just wanted to put in my two cents and say, let's move in that direction and not just be producing kind of the minimum viable, you know, thing we could call an audit. Let's do something more that gives us those toolsets, gives us that information to manage these agencies much more comprehensively. And I, I was encouraged to hear many of the metrics that you guys are, you know, looking at for some of these different agencies, I think steer in that general direction. But I think we, we really have a lot further to go, specifically with respect to BPD.
David, can I, um, just respond with a couple comments then?
Sure, yeah.
I think you hit the nail on the head. Um, the first thing is that, or just wanted to provide clarification for anyone who's, who's listening or watching. So, yes, the, the previous round of quadrennial audits before we moved to the biennial process, um, many of those audits were for the timeframe of like two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen. There were a couple of reasons for that. One, there were some significant weaknesses in the previous legislation, um, and as I've said publicly, I don't think this is perfect where we're at right now, but this is a significant, significant improvement-
Agreed.
-what we had before. Um, and one of the things that, that went into the thinking is, is, as Bob and I were talking through this over the eighteen-month period that, that we worked on this legislation was the need to be nimble and be more current and that no one really cares, um, what the performance of a specific agency was back in two thousand ten-
Right, four years ago, it's not so helpful.
During two thousand fifteen, right? So I think we're able, and one of the major decisions that we made, um, at the February meeting was that we were, and I just responded in that group that, that we were chatting in about, um, the, the audits completed in seventeen, the Group A are for fifteen through sixteen, and, and moving forward, it'll, it'll increase a year each time so that we're, we're current. Two other things I'd like to point out, just in response, one, the, and I've seen this posted online all the time, um, and there are certain standards that need to be met for an audit, um, and I know that people have a, and I'm not suggesting you, um, David, but that certain people have said, well, their audit in their city is much longer, right? And I just want to be clear that a ninety-page audit is not necessarily better than a six-page audit.
It's all about the substance, for sure.
Exactly. It's all about the scope and the methodology. Um, and then I think, you know, your, your point about other cities, um, you know, there, there should be a way to tie that in in terms of, as long as we're establishing that we have solid criteria to, to stand on. And Bob, do you want to add anything to that or does that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, one of the, one of the benefits to working with auditors that know a particular vertical is that they're able to say, okay, well, we've done several of these in different places and we can say that compared to this city, you know, you're, you're really lagging behind in this metric and maybe if you did these changes, you know, you'd be able to, you'd bring these metrics forward. So in my mind, I mean, that's something that we really ought to be aspiring towards. I know it's difficult to kind of get from where we've been and, and catching up, we're playing catch-up to a large extent, but I feel like that that's kind of a key next step. Um, and it's just another brief example of that, like right now in Denver, if you Google on Denver and police and audits, you'll find that there's an ongoing conversation between the city auditor and the Police Department around whether they're improving metrics around, um, you know, like racial profiling stops and things like that. And I feel like these are the kinds of conversations that we need to be having here in Baltimore, is coming out with benchmarks, coming out from our audits that we can then take and use to directly affect and drive performance of agencies like BPD. Um, so, um, the other thing I just wanted to briefly say is, this is a really awkward time for a meeting. I think a lot of people would appreciate if, if a meeting like this was held, you know, not four days before Christmas at four o'clock in the afternoon. I think this is a really important topic and I would encourage you, as you're looking to schedule future meetings today, to select them with specific, you know, a specific eye in mind towards citizen accessibility, because I think that this is an extremely important topic to citizens and that more people will get engaged as this process moves forward and becomes more regular. And I think, you know, that's just a really easy thing that you could do to, to bring more people in. Um, and, you know, I just wanted to close by saying that, you know, I agree wholly with Ms. Trueheart that, um, you know, this isn't just about how we can spend our dollars wisely. This is really about how we allocate our funds and it's really ultimately about civil rights and the lack of having really good audits and really good understanding of how we're doing things really impinges on people's civil rights. And you see it very clearly, um, in the context of something like BPD, where, you know, our failure to follow procedures and to document things and to really understand what's happening, um, directly affects people's civil rights and it also leads to bad outcomes for the city. You know, whole situations like Freddie Gray, which we could potentially have avoided with better management of the Police Department, um, and of course, a whole variety of other public health things. But, you know, these are real things that have a real impact on people's lives, people's city. It's not just about, uh, dollars and cents. So I, I just feel like that that has got to be the foundation on which we build the future of Baltimore's, you know, municipal management, and I think this is a great first step, but let's look at it very clearly in terms of people's civil rights. So, thank you and, um, have a great holiday.
Thank you. And one other thing I'd add is that, you know, part of the reason Bob has, Bob's team has been able to, um, get to the point where they're at is because of a, a negotiation, a compromise we had with the previous administration. And I'd like to take a moment to thank Mayor Pugh for honoring, um, that, that budget agreement that we had, uh, to appropriately fund, um, the, the city auditor's office, to get them the resources they needed. And one of the things we wanted to do, a part of the legislative intent, was to get away from, from having outside consultants, uh, do this, because we have a city auditor's office with a number of auditors that have experience in these agencies, um, they already know these agencies inside and out, and, and we've got capable folks within the city that can, that can do this work for us. Anyone else testify? Um, commission members, anyone else? What I'd like to do is, uh, in closing, um, Bob, if we can get together in, in early January to flesh through, um, the feedback from, from the commission on, uh, preferred, um, performance scope, uh, and then we will set something up for mid to late February. Um, we're not gonna set the date right now, as I know everyone's got hectic schedules. Um, we can't do that without our calendars handy, but the next meeting will be, um, the, the sole purpose of that meeting will be to go through the results of, of the Group A audits, um, and we, do we want to have agency officials here to answer? Yeah?
Be helpful.
Yep. And we'll shoot for, um, a five PM meeting. Uh, David, great point about when we have these meetings. One thing that I know the Council President always says is that when we're having a, a hearing at ten in the afternoon, in the morning, we're actually doing that during our workday, so we need to find a, a way to balance that and to make sure that these meetings are accessible to the public. Um, you know, we do make sure that we have these televised, um, we try to advert, you know, we advertise them on the website, I put out information on social media. Maybe we'll shoot for a, a five o'clock. Hopefully we can schedule it, you know, maybe three or four weeks out and do a little better on, on the public outreach to inform-
Spread the word on that as well.
Thank you. Councilman?
I, I just wanted to raise the que, the question of thinking about how tonight's conversation went and potentially how long the conversations could go with agency officials.
Mm-hmm.
Would there be maybe some value to breaking it up into maybe the Police Department and whoever else is gonna be the most questioned in, in one five o'clock session and then a second five o'clock session, one or two weeks later, for the other agencies? I, I, I raise that only because, as you pointed out, um, the, the time, the five o'clock time that is more convenient for community people to come and see this, um, becomes problematic around six, six-thirty, because that's the point at which we need to be back out in our neighborhoods at the actual community meetings that oftentimes are a conflict for these meetings when they run late. So instead of one marathon five o'clock session that went until seven-thirty or eight o'clock, maybe we could do two ninety-minute ones over multiple weeks.
Yeah, we can, we can explore that. First, you know, all seven of us are gonna have to-
Right.
Are going to have to exercise discipline and not give in to our temptations to get off, and I'm not directing that you or any of us, I-
It hadn't occurred to me that you were thinking of me personally, sir.
But we gotta like stick to what the scope of the audit was and asking, you know, Bob, can you clarify why they screwed up on this? Or, uh, you know, Commissioner so-and-so, can you tell me what you're doing to address it and how soon you'll address it? But we need to be disciplined and sticking to that. The second piece of that is, we're going to have to significantly limit public comment. Um, and, you know, when we're determining scope for the following year, later in the year, that can be more of a, um, a meeting where we have more public input. Uh, for a meeting like this, if we're doing a two-hour meeting, we're probably gonna spend an hour and forty-five minutes on it, we're gonna have to limit folks to a minute or two minutes to provide comment at the end. So just recognizing that there's gonna be a, a trade-off there. end, so just recognizing that there's gonna be a trade-off there. But again, we'll be as transparent as we can. We'll put them on Charm TV, you can stream it online. We'll advertise it with more advance notice. So we're learning. It's not perfect, but we'll get better.
Mr. Chair, is there an opportunity to maybe do the readings more frequently, just to provide that opportunity for public comment?
The meetings more frequently is something that we can look at. Let me get back to you on that. You know, we just, we're required to have two meetings per year. So I would have preferred to have this meeting in late January or early February, but the last thing that I wanted to do is not be compliant with the charter. So we had to have the meeting today, and it was appropriate to at least discuss the scope for next year so that Bob and his team can start to think through the feedback from us and start to come up with their own ideas for scope. But yeah, we can look at having more than two meetings.
Or something.
Well, and I think that the important, the two important pieces of this are, one, us giving input to the city auditor for the scope, and, two, us reviewing the results and asking the city auditor and the agencies for feedback. So I don't know that it's appropriate to have a meeting every two or three months, but perhaps we can have more to adequately address this and ensure appropriate public comment. Yes, sir?
In my constant effort to find compromise, if maybe we had the expected meeting early in the year and meeting late in the year that ran like this meeting did, but maybe we had a meeting in the middle that was just for public comment, I mean, that would be, I, if there, there might be value to that.
Well, we do that. It's the taxpayer night. We actually do two of those. The Board of Estimates does one and the Council does. But yeah, we can talk through this. Let's talk offline, and any opportunity for us to be more transparent, we should at minimum be seriously considering. Within reason, of course. I can have an audits meeting every week. Everyone good? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Everyone have a fantastic, safe, and happy holiday season.